Okay, teams have leveled out at around sixty, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School Board Action Meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence and please keep in your thoughts the family and loved ones of Dr. Albert Al Tims, who passed away on December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Dr. Tims was employed by the Seneca Valley School Districts for thirty-five years upon his retirement in nineteen ninety-three. While at Seneca Valley, he served as an elementary school teacher, an elementary school principal, Director of Elementary Education, and Assistant Superintendent for Student Transportation and Buildings and Grounds. He was deeply respected and will be greatly missed. Thank you very much, and Ms. Andracy, I'll turn it over to you for the pledge allegiance, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's student for I Led the Pledge is Athena Fazio Kirksey. She is a third grader from Evan City Elementary School. Athena was nominated this evening by the administration at Evan City Elementary, which includes Ms. Lori Pendred, Principal, and Dr. Andrew Teddy, Assistant Principal. Athena is the daughter of Anthony Tackett and Elizabeth Fazio of Zillion Opal Borough. And Athena shares with us that she is a bookworm who just loves to read. She also shares with us that she has had a number of medical challenges and hospital stays so far in her young life. So when she wants to grow up, she tells us she would like to be a pediatric doctor because, as she stated, she wants to help other kids. She's a very sweet and smart young lady, and we are very pleased to share with you her I Led the Pledge video, where you will see all of these wonderful traits on full display. So at this time, I would ask the board and administration to turn off their videos, and then ask everyone watching to please stand if they are able and join us as Athena leads us all in the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Polano, when you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I promise that we are going to get to meet all these children in person. It's amazing to see the great work that they do. I just want to be able to say thank you in person to them, but thank you for that. And we will move on now to our roll call. So Ms. Vislant, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bradall. Mr. DiTullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison. Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
President.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Whiterson.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the information reports. I'll turn it back to Ms. Andracy, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items of recognition under our information reports this evening. If you would like to follow along on the agenda, our first item is positive output. That's what Hain Elementary School's first Lego League teams, AKA the SV Tech Spurts and SV Tech Ovators, experienced during the Western Pennsylvania FLL Grand Championship at Swickley Academy on December eleventh. The SV Tech Ovators earned the highest single round score in the robot game during the competition. The SV Tech Spurts were awarded the Rising All-Star Award for their high combined score in all four categories, including robot game, project presentation, robot presentation, and core values presentation. They were also recognized as finalists in the project presentation category for their innovate, for their innovation, which was called Package Protector. More information is in your backup, and we certainly congratulate both teams for an excellent job. Our second item this evening is about one of our Seneca Valley students who describes himself as a dino enthusiast. He recently wrote and published his first book at just ten years of age. His name is Dylan Ledoux, and he is a fifth grader at Hain Middle School. He wrote and published Dylan Draws Dinosaurs, a how-to dinosaur drawing book with over one hundred dinosaur facts for kids. Dylan's book has how-to drawing pages accompanied by a scene showing the dinosaurs in action. The book also has statistics and facts for each dinosaur, and even includes a representation of what their skull looks like. His book can be found and purchased on Amazon, and I'm very excited to share with you that Dylan is actually joining us this evening. So, Dr. Polano, let's welcome him into the meeting. And I will tell you that Dylan is the son of Nick and Juliette Ledoux of Cranberry Township, so. Ms. Ledoux, if you want to unmute your microphone, we welcome you and Dylan into the meeting, and we would congratulate Dylan for an outstanding job on this how-to book. I know our school board is probably going to have a number of questions and some congratulatory remarks for Dylan. But I think I would start first for everyone by just asking Dylan if he could tell us a little bit about how he came up with the idea. Oh, I love it. You're holding up your book. That's awesome. If you want to bring it closer to the camera, we can all see it. But maybe share with us, Dylan, how you came up with the idea of writing a step-by-step drawing book about dinosaurs.
Well, we had been doing drawing videos on YouTube, and we had been using some how-to draw books that Dylan had, and he said, oh, I could make my own drawing book. He thought his, you know, drawing style was in line with a lot of what other books that children, you know, targeted at his age were, you know, would be out, would be interested in. Thanks. Dylan, I was a little shy on camera.
Hey, Dylan, this is, my name's Jim. I'm a member of the school board. I mean, my favorite dinosaur has always been T-Rex. What's, what's your favorite dinosaur? You've got a lot of facts. What's your favorite one?
Dylan likes the velociraptor, but not the one from Jurassic Park, the real one. The real velociraptor is feathered and is the size of a turkey.
Hey, Dylan. Dylan?
I'll wave something.
So, this is great. I can't believe that you, at ten years old, actually got to publish a book. That's fantastic. And I really would like to thank your mom and dad for encouraging you to do that. What a great family project. But here's where I need help. Maybe in your next edition, you can do this. I can never pronounce the names of all the dinosaurs. Maybe you could make a talking book and help us all to be able to pronounce the names, some of these names that are twenty-six letters long. Well, I think Dad's got an answer.
Well, you have the pronunciations, the pronunciation guides, but it is still tricky.
Yeah. U-plecephalus, this is a tough one. If you see it, probably can't say it there, but but there's a pronunciation guide below. But, you know, if you just tried to look at that U-plecephalus, it might be a little tricky.
It'd be a lot trickier. Thank you.
I will say, Dylan, I can't write an email.
One of us draws drawings a lot on his YouTube channel as well, where he obviously says, and does a little bit more talking on there.
Dylan, this is Dr. Vitell. I wanted to show you. I don't know if you can see it on my screen. I ordered my own copy as soon as I heard about this. Oh, let's see, here we go, the camera, right? And I was so excited to read this. I'm just so proud of you. You know, I don't think people realize, first of all, publishing a book is a lot of work. But the amount of work you put into this book as an author and the creativity, I'm just so impressed. And to speak to Mr. Peterson's point, he does have how to pronounce each dinosaur in here. And there's a little key, and so I'm impressed with his drawings. I'm impressed with his creativity and his writing. And I took this home and shared it with my family, but I'm not sharing it with this school board or anyone else because, Dylan, they have to go buy their own copy, right?
Yeah.
Congratulations, Dylan. We're very proud of you, your teachers, your administrators. This was a huge amount of work, and I'm just so proud of you.
Dylan's hard at work on the, on the next edition. Terrors, or marine reptiles.
I will say that you have, you know, I looked up, you know, the link through Amazon, so you have seven reviews, and they're all perfect. So I don't know how many people get, you know, excellent ratings like that at, you know, ten years old, but we know one right now, and that's you. So this is awesome. I am so proud of you, and I'm great that you can share it with us as well. So I'm sure you'll see many more sales now that you, you were able to introduce it to everyone at the district, so.
Yep. Dylan got interviewed by the Post Gazette a couple days ago as well.
So, don't forget about us either. You know, we want autographs too.
Hey, Dr. Vitell. I wanted, Dylan, I wanted to mention, my, my name is Mr. Hester, and sitting right next to me here is, is Mrs. Hester. And she wanted me to make sure I mentioned how proud she was of you. I know she had you when you were at Rowan, and she was so excited. She was all over Facebook advertising how great your book was. And she's just amazed and not surprised at how much you've achieved. So, thank you, Dylan.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board members, questions, comments?
I think I just, if there's any technical difficulties that I have in this broadcast, it's because I'm on Amazon right now ordering a book.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Enjoy your evening. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dylan.
Thank you.
So that leads us into our next item, our Seneca Valley All-Star winner. And I'm very pleased to announce that our winner for the January All-Star Club is Nicole Eaton. And Nicole is a Central Office Administrative Assistant to our three Assistant Superintendents, Dr. McKinley, Dr. McCarty, and Dr. Polano. So she's quite busy on a daily basis. So first, we would like to welcome in Ms. Eaton, who is joining us this evening. She's coming in. And while she is joining us, I'm actually going to turn the microphone over first to Dr. Sean McCarty, who would like to say a few words about Ms. Eaton on behalf of himself and his colleagues. Dr. McCarty.
Thank you, Ms. Andracy. It's my privilege to speak a few words of Nicole Eaton, and she is a vital part of what we do every single day. But a few things that we put together and our thoughts are a few things. From the standpoint of where Nicole started with us, you know, years ago, she was a paraprofessional in our school district, working directly with children with significant special needs. Then she moved into the District Administration Office at the reception desk. And then for the last five years, she's been working as the administrative assistant, as you mentioned, Ms. Andracy, for the three of us. And, you know, I could talk a lot about what she does in our district. However, it's how she approaches her job that I think really sets her apart and makes the difference. You know, the positivity she exudes creates an atmosphere people just gravitate towards. And the little things that she does and how she begins her conversations with people, and she really does express, you know, genuine interest in people's lives. You know, one of the little funny things that she does is, how are you? And we get super great. So every morning, you get to start with a super great. So what a great way to start. But, you know, that personality draws people in because she sincerely does care about people. As you can imagine, people contact us about circumstances, and often there's a wide range of emotion. There's people who are angry or frustrated or sad, but Nicole always, with every single situation, treats everyone with respect and empathy, and guides them to where we can support and solve the problems that they may have. People don't realize the volume and detail associated with her position and responsibility of timelines and budgetary items, edits, state and federal paperwork that all move across her desk on a daily basis. However, she's so efficient that it really always just seems so in control and altogether. But, you know, beyond those significant responsibilities, as a member of our team, she is literally the first person always to volunteer to help her colleagues. During this last couple of years, as you know, we've been facing some significant staffing challenges like never before. She's helped in transportation, student services, registration, covering the front desk, but always, always with a positive attitude. In some of her most recent examples, she'll go to the elementary buildings and hand out food to families in need. She's actually driven to some of those houses and handed out food and supplies. And just last month, she was in our conference room collecting supplies for families over winter break. I'm going to go back to where I started this conversation. What separates Nicole, it's not what she does, but really how she does it, and most importantly, how she makes people feel around her. So I can speak for all of us at Seneca Valley that we are very, very fortunate to have her on our team. So thank you, Ms. Andracy. This is so well deserved.
Thank you, Dr. McCarty. So very well said. And I guess at this time, I'm going to put you on the spot, Ms. Eaton. I don't know if you have anything you would like to say, but we would certainly join you, have you join us in the meeting here and share a few words.
Thank you very much. Those words were very kind. Dr. McCarty, I appreciate it very much. I joked today that I was going to start with, it all began in nineteen seventy-eight when my wonderful parents moved my family to Zillion Opal, which was Southwest Butler County School District at the time. But really, this isn't about me. The recognition needs to go to the entire Seneca Valley community. It's obvious from the student that led the pledge to Dylan and his book, and the students that were recognized for their amazing accomplishments, that they are why we are all here. The school board members, the parents, the paraprofessionals, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria employees, the teachers, the other secretaries, the directors, and the administrators. I'm proud to work beside each of these groups. They're hardworking individuals in every sense of the word, who make my job easy and enjoyable every day. It's a team effort of some of the most dedicated people I've had the pleasure of knowing. Many, I have the honor of also calling friend as well as a coworker. I was just lucky to be chosen to represent all of these working parts, especially the secretaries. Beyond school, which feels like my second home, I have amazing support with my ever-patient husband and my three incredible children. They support me to do my very best. In fact, they said I could choose between Subway and Burger King tonight, and, and that they would spoil me. But truly, thank you very much for choosing me. I do appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. What wonderful, kind words. I'm just curious, did you pick Subway or Burger King?
Up Subway. With the help of my daughter, she preferred Subway.
Well, thank you again for all of the work that you do for all of the different departments at Central Office. We could not do it without you. So thank you very much. I don't know if anyone has anything else they would like to say before we bid Ms. Eaton good night. Anyone?
Well, you know I'm gonna say something, Nicole. There, there's few people that I can say that, you know, outside of my family that I've known for over thirty years, and you're one of them. You know, being an alum of Seneca Valley, graduating with your brother. You know, I'm not surprised at, at any of this. The recognition that you received is, is well-earned, and it's who you've been for ever and a day. So I'm not surprised by any of it. Is, Mr. Nickel can speak to, when, when you go into the office, you know, we'll have to go in to sign papers or something. Nicole has always been there to greet us, you know, in one way or another when we see her. So she's always been an amazing person, and for the number of years I've been on the board, I've seen a lot of her. So it's been great to see you there. And, you know, just being able to talk to you and seeing, you know, an alumni do what you do and give back to the district. It just, it makes my heart happy. So I appreciate everything you've done. And it's great to see as always. So I didn't embarrass you too much, though. So I held back a little bit. And any other board member?
I just, if I could jump in, just, I mean, Ms. Eaton, I mean, I have met you a bunch of times in Central Office. I want to thank you and congratulate you for this, this accolade. I think you're representative of a lot of people just like you. It's this village that it takes to, to make our district hum as well as it does. You are the cream of the crop, and I, you were missed if I didn't say, you know, my sympathies for having to support Sean McCarty for as long as you've had to do so. But you've risen above that, and so I thank you for you and all of your colleagues and what you do for the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Mr. DiTullio, I'm just congratulating Ms. Eaton, but also saying that, you know, in true All-Star Award fashion, that she accepts the award on behalf of all of her colleagues. In true Nicole fashion, you know, she's all about team, and I really appreciate that. It's been really important, and we've always been a team. But this pandemic has really, you know, for all the negative things it has brought, it has brought people like Nicole to the top of the pile in reminding us about priorities, in reminding us about not sweating the small stuff. So thank you, Nicole. Thank you for your dedication. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
We'll let you go then. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good night. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
You too. Our third item, our item C for dates to remember this evening, we have two dates to remember. January twenty-fifth will be our report card release date for grades seven through twelve. And then February seventh marks our school board work session for February, and that begins at seven PM. And that is all I have, Mr. President, unless you or other board members have any questions.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Andracy? Looking around, I see. Thank you very much. We'll move on on the agenda, and in your backup, you will have the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food service, tax collections, and capital projects funds. I'm sure if you had any questions, I directed those to Ms. Burtner. Our next item is the Program of Study Presentation, Dr. McKinley.
Thank you, and good evening. And Dr. Polano is going to assist me. She's going to call up the, my presentation on the screen. And, and as she does that, this is my annual presentation. I get excited every January to, to share this with, with everyone. And this is no different. Dr. Polano, if you could go to the next slide, the presentation will be in two parts today. In the first part, really, isn't, I don't have a lot of additions or changes in the program of study this year, but I will share what we have. And then the second half of the presentation is, is what, what's the future for learning on the secondary campus? So, Dr. Polano, if you could go to the next slide. So we do have some changes to programs studies. We are changing the title of American Literature. It's going to become Life in America. Honors British Literature is going to become Honors English Twelve. CHS Calculus is going to become CHS Business Calculus. This was a calculated move by our math department as they did some research. We had college and high school, that's what CHS stands for, College and High School Calculus and AP Calculus. And really, they were pretty similar choices for the students. And so they opted, the math department opted, and through student interest, to change it more to Business Calculus. And then also, one of our blended courses, we're moving towards, from mobile game design into software game art. Dr. Polano, if you could go to the next slide. We, we also have some new courses, and these are all cyber. You can see the various art courses, digital photography, and Cyber and Art seven through twelve, which is a general title. But we're going to be trying to provide a more of a hands-on course even for our cyber students. So that is it for our new courses. And then moving on, what's the future for the learning of the secondary campus? The administrators and myself have been working long and hard in multiple years through this, and we really have a three-pronged, intense focus with this. And I will, I will go into each piece of this, the student-centered learning component, the student engagement component, and then student relationships. Next slide, please. With the student-centered learning, we are looking at really three parts to that, and what we want students to be able to know and do. And the first thing is to look at a problem or issue critically. And that means researching it thoroughly, investigating it thoroughly, and then learning it thoroughly. We want students to be able to look at a problem or issue and see and understand all sides of it. Now, that doesn't mean agreeing with all sides of it, but that is seeing multiple perspectives and, and just trying to understand all the sides of it. And then finally, being able to discuss that problem or issue appropriately with their peers and colleagues. Often, this is the most difficult part for many people, including adults. And so we're trying to give our students more opportunity to discuss and communicate thoroughly once they've gone through that process. Next slide, please. And still sticking with student-centered learning, we've had more of a focus on the secondary campus of problem-based learning. One of the acronyms for that is PBL, and, and what that really leads to is more student agency or student choice. They, they hopefully will be more satisfied with their learning as they go through this, if they have more choice in the matter. We hope it encourages greater understanding. And one of the things we've always been looking at doing is, is creating this further development of lifelong skills. That's been a, a big focus of ours for many years. Next slide, please. With student engagement, we will also be looking to go to pathways. Now, we've had sixteen career clusters for quite a while now, and even beginning in eighth grade, as students register for their ninth grade year and in each subsequent year, students have been able to, to select a career cluster of focus for them. What we're going to be doing is pulling them together more so into, into career pathways. And you can see, we're going really from sixteen clusters down into the five pathways. I'm not going to read them to you. They're, they're on the screen. And just please understand that these career pathways will still be found within, or I'm sorry, the sixteen career clusters will still be found within the five career pathways. Next slide, please. So, we have been talking for multiple years and, and talking to multiple people about this, about moving the secondary into the modified block schedule. And one thing I want to highlight and hopefully say numerous times here, this is to be implemented in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is not, I repeat, not to be implemented for next school year, but two years down the road. Okay? And what we will be doing is moving from a forty-minute period to a longer time period. The latest model we've been researching and discussing with, with multiple people is moving to, to a seventy or seventy-five minute period. Number of years ago, we brought in parents, we brought in students, and we continue to talk with those groups. We've talked to teachers a great deal about this, about moving forward with this. And what we feel that this will give us, and you can see the three points below there, are more time to focus for teachers, more time for the teachers to focus and the students to focus, more time for the teachers and all of us to get to know our students, and then less transitions for the students. When they have an eight-period day, they have multiple transitions. So if they have longer periods, they'll have less, less transitions in a day. Also, teachers will be utilizing different instructional approaches with their students. We feel that will greatly benefit in the students' learning. And then finally, again, as I mentioned on the previous slide, this is going to be interest-driven. A big part of this with the students, as we incorporate the pathways with this modified block schedule. And then, next slide, please, Dr. Polano. Thank you. And finally, the, the third prong, as I mentioned earlier, is student relationships. And we've been spending some time talking And we've been spending some time talking with teachers about this, talking with administrators about this. What kind of environment are we trying to create in our classrooms? How are students valued? How well do we know our students? And then, once we do feel like we've made some headway in knowing our students and valuing our students, our teachers and administrators will be doing purposeful planning of the lessons so that we can take advantage of those relationships that we've created. So, and, and on to the next slide, please. I'll be taking questions now from the board. And, and Dr. Pallano, I think we can go ahead and stop sharing the screen and get everybody back on screen here. But just to, just, I want to take this opportunity to highlight where we're headed. The program of studies is, the things that I highlighted will be implemented for next school year. With these pathways I talked about, with the modified block schedule I referred to, that won't be for next year. That will be for the year after. And, and let me just add this to, as I conclude my part of the presentation, that, as I mentioned earlier, we've been planning this and planning this pre-pandemic. But when the pandemic did hit us, unfortunately, it did cause us to delay. We had to, to put the brakes on with some of the planning that went into, we had hoped to, to be instituting this soon. We are going to have upcoming meetings, more meetings with teachers, with the union, with students about all of this. So, we're very excited as we move forward. Is there anything I could answer for any of the board members?
Harrison.
Yeah, just a clarification. If they're going to 70 or 75-minute periods, then there'll be semester courses. Is that correct?
Yeah, we currently already have, we have semester courses, we have full-year courses, but we are going to be using an AB schedule. So, again, the model that we're looking at as one of the days of the week is an eight-period day. And then to the days of the week, let's say Tuesday, Thursday would be the odd periods, periods one, three, five, and seven. And then the Wednesday and Friday would be the even periods, two, four, six, and eight. And, and this really does mirror, we have a large number of our students that, that go on to post-secondary schooling. And that type of a schedule mirrors what a lot of them will see in college. So, that's another reason in moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Bradle, I think I saw your hand first.
Yes, thank you. Well, one of my questions was just answered, so I appreciate that, Mr. McKinley. My other question was, as far as the five career pathways, the students are still able to move within the different pathways, correct? They don't have to choose a pathway and kind of stick to that, the curriculum within that pathway.
That is correct. As in the past, you know, students beginning in their eighth grade year and finishing in their 11th grade year as they plan for their senior, they could, they could dive into a different pathway each and every year. Or, I'm sorry, we were doing career clusters. We'll be moving into these pathways. The other thing we're trying to open up with the pathways is more internships, more externships, more job shadowing and things like that, which we feel are very valuable for our students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. McKinley, you never fail to impress when you give us this presentation every year. Thank you for all the hard work it represents. A lot of focus there, obviously, on the students. But what about the other side of the coin? What are you doing with staff and faculty to get them prepared for this whole new paradigm of, of schooling?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, thank you for asking that. We are using some of our professional development days and moving that direction. As recent as this past Friday, the administrative team got together and, and we're planning our professional development days in February, in March, and so on for this year. We still have all of next year to continue to do that. We're highlighting different instructional strategies with teachers. And one thing, one of the things we talked about was having a panel discussion. Because some of our teachers come from other school districts, either in-state or out-of-state. Some of them already have had some positive experiences with the block scheduling. So, we talked about bringing them in for a panel discussion. That's one thing we're considering. So, we continue to move ahead with teachers. We've been trying to get a lot of feedback from them and input from them and, and plan our days around where they feel their needs are, instead of us just trying to guess where their needs are. And, and so that, I feel like that's gone real well.
Thank you. Any other board member? Kathy, Ms. Whittle, sorry.
Thank you. I, I have family members that have this, they're in another state and they're high, high learners. And they freak out and stressed if they have to miss a, miss a day. Is there a plan? Well, I mean, I, I like prior to introducing this, you were saying how our learning is going to be different. It's going to be more interactive and it'll help keep the interest of the students. But will there be a plan? Will we livestream? Will we tape? Like, I'm, I'm sure that's a plan or is it in, plan in motion or still thinking about it?
Yeah. And, and as I mentioned, in the upcoming weeks here, we're, we're meeting with the union, the teachers' union. So, that will be probably one of the things discussed. You know, we do have the capabilities for live streaming now. And, and that has been one of the concerns of the teachers and of the students. And, and yeah, we don't want to have them feel the weight of the world bearing on them, either side, teachers or students. And so, uh, that, that is definitely one thing we're going to continue to consider.
I appreciate it. I always like, you do get, this is my favorite presentation. You, you, sometimes your duties as an administrator, you're, it's not the glorious or the fun. And I, I do miss seeing you in front of the podium and you get excited, like you're coaching on the side of the sidelines. So, it's always a pleasure whenever we get to see people with their passion and, and it's displayed in front, and, you know, and it, it shows as far as the curriculum, I think what I've been here for eight years and what's been online and the evolution in the foresight. And I'm just impressed, every year, we're like, what's he going to bring us this year? So, I appreciate all the efforts that you and your team, what you do for our school, school district. I'll share a little story. Uh, my daughter graduated and was in some of the data classes and computer classes. And she still keeps in touch with the, the teachers there. And even networking as far as jobs and ideas and it, it's, it, the way that we're, our school district is just, I just feel like they have the whole student in mind and the array of avenues that they can go to, it just covers a lot. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you. I miss doing this presentation in person.
And Ms. Whittle, I will add, um, the relatives that had mentioned to you in other school systems, how stressful it can be to miss a day. I would also add the flip side of that coin, because there's pros and cons to every student's schedule. I've worked in several school districts and several different states. And one thing I've always been, unless you have a secondary student in your home, you don't quite, or, or you've experienced this with your own children, you forget what it's like to be in high school and to have multiple exams on the same day. So, that has also been a, a point of contention with some of our advanced placement, college and high school students, that they can, in the seven, eight building, they have a team plan. So, those teachers have an opportunity to touch base, that is, if they're not covering during the pandemic for colleagues. But they have an opportunity to touch base and plan out their, their testing schedule. Grades nine through 12, our teachers don't have the opportunity to have a team plan. So, I'm not saying they will have a team plan in the modified block, but they will definitely be able to plan a little better and have a little more planning time to discuss and to do some interdisciplinary work and multidisciplinary work across subjects. And also, students would not have that traditional eight or nine-period day every single day. So, we aren't looking at a true block. We aren't looking at a true traditional schedule, but we are looking at a modified block. But there's still a lot of work to be done here. Before the pandemic, we had students debating this topic during their lunch and learn. And so I got to sit in on that and to hear some of our advanced placement, college and high school students debate the pros and cons. Some of them did this in their debate class as well. So, it was really interesting. And we need to be open and listen. And a part that I didn't hear was about parent engagement. We need to engage our parents with students that will be in grade seven through 12 in the next two years to hear their view on this. And it's really important for the parents who have already had a child go through secondary to talk about the pros and cons of a traditional schedule versus modified block as well. So, there's quite a bit of work to do in the next two years. It was put on pause during the pandemic. But the most important part is that we're listening to teachers, that we're not coming up with all of the ideas, that teachers, students, and parents are helping us to form this schedule that we hope to implement in the next two years. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, I think I saw your hand go up. And then, Mr. Peterson, I saw you after.
Thank you, Ms. Twyler. Yep, just quickly back to the clusters to pathways, maybe a comment that'll turn into a question. I, I love the idea of it on paper, as we know, this generation doesn't stay in one job, one industry, one, you know, field. And so, Dr. McKinley, is the idea that they'll get exposed to many things in related fields as part of those pathways? And, and maybe a little more well-rounded than the individual clusters?
Yes, you know, as we move from 16 to five, it does give that opportunity, Mr. Jacobs, to, to be a little broader with that, with that focus. We're still letting, allowing them to hone in. If we find some students that come in seventh and eighth grade, know exactly what they want to do. And for the next five, six years, they don't waver one bit and they go right towards that. Other students, and that's a little bit of an anomaly at times, but other students don't have an, any idea what they want to do. And the best thing we can do to help them is to begin to rule things out. I think I want to do this. Well, let's give you a little taste of that. No, no, I don't want to do that. Let's go shift over in this direction. One of the things that, that is a highlight for me, yours are graduation project. And students have just that opportunity. Many of them go to a job shadowing type of experience now for, for graduation project. And somebody, the, the meetings I've had in the presentations, the student presentations have said, you know, we thought, I thought this was the direction I wanted to go. It turned out that I do not want to do that. And what a valuable lesson to learn before they jump into the high money bills of college and, and post-secondary schooling. So, um, we're trying to give them that opportunity even sooner in their learning career. So, that's part of the idea behind the pathways, yes.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Peterson.
So, thank you, Mr. President. So, Dr. McKinley, I, I feel duty-bound to wave the flag for the VOTEC here. Uh, I'm sure you've thought about this, but I, I'm encouraging Seneca Valley to make sure that the integration of the VOTEC students with the VOTEC schedule is maintained.
Absolutely. Yeah, as our, our secondary team met last Friday and we had an intense focus on these two areas, the modified block schedule and the pathways. And, and VOTEC was one of the first things to come up. And, and how do we incorporate those students upon their return from Butler VOTEC? How do we incorporate them and fold them right into what, what exactly we're doing? And, and how can this work best for them as well? That was one of the first things we talked about. Very proud this year that, that our numbers of, I'll say soared a little bit at VOTEC. We, we went from the, we're always around between 100, 120. We're up over 140, I believe, this year. And, and that's exciting. And we want to keep those students in and take them into account as all the rest of our students as well. So,
Glad to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I was going to ask that question. You beat me to it. So, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Nickel.
I just, I, I kind of want to pile and talk, because it was, it was on my mind. And, you know, we've got 80 or so folks listening in, just can't, can't not emphasize enough the career path, the career pathways or career clusters that could be around. You know, we call VOTEC Career and Technical Education. And so, Dr. McKinley, I'm not surprised you've been thinking about, as we move to a modified block schedule, how do we continue to accommodate students who have a passion for, you know, HVAC or cosmetology or, you know, cooking, all those different programs that are there for all of our students. And, you know, I, as my small soapbox, I mean, that, I believe that we, we have soared a bit in the number of students that have gone over to our career type of education, because we continue to have a, a group of parents in our constituency who are open to that as a career for the children. So, you know, I encourage the 80 or so folks who are on here, beyond the panelists, to just keep an open mind, if you've got sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th graders, to what's out there. And, uh, thank you as always for working that into the program of studies, Dr. McKinley.
And let me just add that, you know, and if you've been around me, you've probably heard me say this before. You know, if we have 80% or 85% of our students moving on to post-secondary education, I, I really don't care what that number is. The thing I care about is that every student, all 100% of them are appropriately placed. You know, if, if it's, if it's their goal to move on to college, then, then let's get them to the right place there. If it's their goal to move on to career or further certifications or what have you, or armed services or whatever it may be, let's get them appropriately placed so that they can succeed at that next step.
Thank you for that, Mr. or Dr. McKinley. Uh, any other board members, questions, comments? Looking around and not seeing any. Uh, Dr. McKinley, awesome job as always. I'll echo what Ms. Whittle said. You know, it's always a, a highlight to see the passion of, of the education come out. Not what, just with you, but with all of you at administration for these types of presentation. And, you know, it's why we're here. I'm glad we're, we're getting a chance to discuss it. So, thank you for all the hard work, not just you, the staff, you know, the teachers being involved in, you know, the students that you've engaged with as well. So, I thank them for all the extra time that they put into it. And look forward to this. It, it's exciting. And we're back doing the block scheduling, talking about this is going to be good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, since there's no other questions or comments on the program of studies, we'll move on to the COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitale, please.
Thank you. I had a very, very long report last week, so I'm not going to repeat all of that. It's recorded, it's on YouTube. And it's also in the minutes that will soon be published. So, I'll keep this short and brief. The Seneca Valley COVID numbers, parents and staff members can access that on our website on the SV COVID-19 dashboard. It was updated yesterday. It has not been updated yet today, simply because our nurses have been swamped. As soon as they can get to it, they will. Numbers are still coming in. They're still working at this hour to get us those numbers. So, that will be updated. As of yesterday, we had 20 active student cases, 11 active staff cases. The breakdown and the quarantine numbers are all there for public, public view. The next item I usually go into again is the early warning dashboard. You can reach that dashboard by Googling the Department of Health, Pennsylvania Department of Health COVID-19 Early Warning Dashboard and looking at Butler County. And again, those numbers are all available for public review. The next numbers, sometimes the paper does pick these numbers up, sometimes they don't. So, I will just tell you, my weekly report from the Butler Health System is 56 patients as of today, yesterday at 7:30 and six in the ICU. Sadly, two deaths reported on January 14th and three deaths reported on January 16th. So, that is from the Butler Health System. And I know often people ask me about Children's Hospital in Pittsburgh. We don't, we have a contact there that we call, but we don't get numbers from them daily. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure that they put those numbers out. But I can tell you qualitatively, I'm always asking the nurses, do we have any reports of any child in Children's Hospital due to COVID? And the recent qualitative report from the nurses is that we do not. So, we are glad for that and we are glad to hear that. The county and zip code data, we continue to track. Again, public and parents and staff members can find this on the Pennsylvania Department of Health website. The numbers are still up high, but you know, high is relative anymore, right? And so, we have seen neighboring states start to plateau with their numbers. And so, we hope we will soon see that in our district, county, and state as well. And the final item under COVID-19, the federal government was advertising to school districts and many others that they would be opening a website for free home test kits. Each home address would get four in-home tests if they requested such. And that website was supposed to open tomorrow. It opened today. So, I sent that out to our staff members and anyone who wanted that may fill that out at their own personal leisure. That's all I have for the COVID-19 update report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. Vitale? Looking around and seeing none. Thank you very much. So, we're going to move on then in our agenda. And this is the public comment portion of our meeting. And we do have public comment. And I'm going to read our guidelines to, to start, as I've been doing lately. So, here we go. The public comment guidelines, the board policy allows for 30 minutes of public comment with each speaker allowed up to four minutes. We have extended that to one hour and allowed 15 speakers to register. However, at this point, there's only been one that I understand has registered. Per our policy, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, that's me, and no participant may address or question board members individually. Speakers are allowed to name and speak of their own children. Speakers are allowed to name and speak of their own children, but are unable to reference other students by name. The public comment of the portion is just that, an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, information and opinions on our upcoming board votes. Please address the board with respect and stability, just as you would expect to be treating your home or workplace, and just as we expect students to act in our classrooms. This board has done their very best to keep politics out of the boardroom and away from our school board agenda business. This is not where we campaign. This is where we conduct official school business. So I would ask that our speaker tonight refrain from anything involving elections or campaigns. I will have a timer set to go off at three minutes and thirty seconds as signals to the speaker to wrap up their comments. At four minutes, I will let the speaker know that they've reached their time limit as a second indicator to complete their statement. And in accordance with our policy, the presiding officer, again, that is me, may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. So with that being read, I will turn it over to Dr. Palano to introduce our next speaker.
Thank you. As you mentioned, there is one individual requesting to speak this evening, and that is Ms. Stephanie Lane. Ms. Lane, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Ms. Lane, you're still muted. But we do see you or Ms. Lane, you are still muted. Hello, Ms. Lane.
Someone who can give guidance as to how to for her to unmute?
So I have requested the individual to unmute, but we don't see that occurring on their end.
Just give a couple of seconds. We might have a difficult connection. Ms. Lane, we're so huh, and there's no way that we can unmute remotely, correct? No, okay. So I'm I have no other way to get in touch with Ms. Lane either. What do we do in this situation? I guess, Ms. Magilio, I'll ask you. Since we're having a technical difficulty on getting her unmuted, what the procedure here, can we continue on and come back? Or do we have to do?
Right, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we've made a an effort. Ms. Lane, are you there? It seems like for whatever reason she's not hearing us or she just jumped off. Okay, I think we can move on, you know, obviously, if if Ms. Lane jumps back on and is available. She can still make her comments. But I think at this point, you know, we can move on with the agenda.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Dr. Palano. Oh, what? Hold on, I think we have her. Okay, good.
Gosh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I'm glad you were able to to get on and get unmuted. This is perfect. So you know, without further ado, you have four minutes and I'll let you begin.
Okay, well, thank you so much for the time to speak. And I know we're we're getting a lot of mixed messages from this school board. You know, everything's going great. But we are a hundred and forty-six days into the school year when masks right now should be optional. We are the only school district in Butler County that is not mask optional. And, you know, a lot of us really entrust you guys with our kids, but we're seeing a lot of devastating things starting to happen. And if mask and content tracing is working, why aren't we seeing better numbers? And we're still waiting on a survey that many parents have asked for in regards to COVID and masks. And you know, kids, you know, don't wear masks outside. They don't wear masks to school parties. My son's first grade class spent two hours at a trampoline park this past weekend, no masks. There's theater companies in, you know, the area that are having get togethers, no masks. And does COVID just exist at schools? Because that's kind of what it where it seems like that's where everything is. You know, we haven't had one single child death. One at all. And I'm so thankful. But are we just gonna live in fear that we're just gonna just wait and wait and wait until these numbers just continue to go down? How much longer is this just gonna go on? And can we just go back to the old days when you're sick, you have a symptom, you stay home? That's exactly what Mars is doing. And I don't see their case numbers going up. In the end, parents make the health decision for their children, not a school board. And I'm sick and tired of you making health decisions for my kids and other families when most of you aren't even on the school location at all. And and I know it, you know, we want to use the staffing excuses and we want to use, but you know what? Every fall and winter, kids get sick. There's always going to be staffing issues. And so what is the plan going forward? And it looks like we're gonna probably have a board meeting in person. What is the criteria that's gonna stop this nonsense? When are we gonna end everything? And this disease has a ninety-nine percent survival rate. Let's stop masking and let kids breathe. This isn't political, but you know, we're the only one in Butler County. Something's gotta give. And I'm, I'm just, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Palano, that was our only speaker this evening, correct? So we are able to move on. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to our our meeting. And at this time, I would look for a motion that we approve the following to approve our minutes of our work session of November eighth, twenty twenty-one, our action meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and our reorganization meeting of December sixth, twenty twenty-one. And those are all in your backup. The treasurer's report as providing our backup, the general fund bills as providing your backup in the grand total amount of seven million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. And the construction fund bills as providing your backup in the total of seven million, four thousand dollars. I'm sorry, seven million, four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Hester. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Ms. Harrison. Any discussion or questions on any of these items? Hearing and seeing none, Ms. Ms. Lint, you call the role, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to administration. Mr. Nickel, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion with regards to the following administration action items. To approve all these items, the first would be policy eight hundred point one to approve board policy eight hundred point one, electronic signatures. It is its first reading. It's provided in our backup. The second school bus drivers to approve the list, excuse me, list of new bus drivers since November twenty twenty-one for ABC Transit and Valley Lines. That list is in your backup. The solicitor fee adjustment to approve the fee adjustment for our solicitor from a hundred and forty-five to one hundred and fifty-five dollars per hour retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-two. Detail on that is in your backup. The substitute rate increases, and they're lengthy. I'm gonna read them for us here to put into our minutes. To increase the substitute rates across the following job classifications, this is effective January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two for the remainder of the current twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. The first is for substitute teachers. To increase the daily substitute rate from a hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty dollars per day for both certified and emergency substitute teachers, that's approximately twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents per day, excuse me, per hour. The second is to increase the daily rate for Seneca Valley retired teachers substitute from one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five dollars per day. That is approximately twenty-five dollars per hour. The third, for any day-to-day substitute, excuse me, teacher substitute, either a certified or emergency, that is subbed in the district this year for thirty-plus days. They will move to a daily rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, which again is approximately one twenty-five dollars an hour. These days do not need to be consecutive and may be cumulative. Seneca Valley retired subs that have subbed for thirty-plus days this year will move to two hundred dollars per day after day thirty. Again, days do not need to be consecutive. They may be cumulative, and that would be approximately twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents per hour. And any day-to-day teacher substitute that subs in a multiple support classroom will receive one hundred and seventy-five dollars per day on day one of that assignment. That again is approximately twenty-five dollars per hour for that individual. On our substitute school nurses, to increase the daily substitute rate from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars per day, which, as I said earlier, is approximately twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents per hour. To increase the daily rate for Seneca Valley retired school nurses to substitute from a hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy-five dollars, approximately twenty-five dollars an hour. And for any day-to-day nurse substitute certified or emergency that has subbed in the district this year for thirty-plus days, they will move to a daily rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars, approximately twenty-five dollars per hour. And those days, as stated earlier, the substitute teachers do not need to be consecutive and may be cumulative. And finally, Seneca Valley School Nurse Retired Subs that have subbed for thirty-plus days this year will move to two hundred dollars per day, approximately twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents an hour after day thirty. And as stipulated earlier, those days do not need to be consecutive and may be cumulative. Our next item is the Slippery Rock College of Education affiliation agreement. This will be to approve the affiliation agreement with Slippery Rock University College of Education to provide cooperating professionals for student teaching for the five-year term from January fourth of this year, twenty twenty-two to January fourth of twenty twenty-seven. Detail on that affiliation is in your backup. And finally, for the Allegheny Health Network naming rights agreement for the new Aquatics Center in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. That agreement is in your backup. It is a tentative agreement per AHN Solicitor Review. Those are the items in my motion. I would look for a second, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for the motion, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? I'll give it to Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on any of these issues? Looking, Ms. Whittle.
Even though Mr. Hoffman's not here, I just think it would be a nice time. And if you can pass this on to him, Mr. Magilio, that he's well deserved. And we've all sat here, you know, administrators, the board, he has been there every step of the way advising us, keeping us calm. He's the steady, keeping us, you know, steady and and keeping us on the straight. So I just want to personally thank him for everything he does, his office. It's 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 relief that he's he's there with us and that we're not doing this on our own. We use him. We rely on him as his expertise, but I just thought it would be a nice time to to, he's like one of the unsung heroes that I don't think gets enough credit that he's in the trenches with us, you know, late phone calls from Dr. Vitale, the school president, vice president, and so on. So I could go on, but I just thought it would be a nice time to single him out, congratulate him and make it official on the school notes today.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Whittle, for your kind words. And I absolutely will pass it on to man. I know he'll appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's very kind of you.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to real quick, I know Ms. Lewis isn't here, but the naming rights, she put a lot of work into this. This has been something that's gonna be very good, not only for the district, but for the community at large. I'm very happy to see this agreement, you know, naming rights are what we do anymore anywhere. So Ms. Lewis deserves a lot of the credit for for making this happen. So even though she's not here, she's attending senior night. So, you know, but please pass along, Dr. Vitale, you know, our our thanks to this, you know, we're finally getting this done. So looking around, any other?
She is here on campus. She's just not with us virtually.
Correct.
He is at, I heard you mention basketball senior night. I too want to add that it takes quite a bit of negotiating to get these naming rights. And Ms. Lewis did this, and we're just so proud of her and her offices' work. Even in spite of a leave that she's gotten this done, a hundred thousand dollars coming to us from Allegheny Health Network. We're very proud of that. And we want to thank her publicly for helping us to get the agreement to this point. We did, so that you're aware, Mr. DeTulio and the rest of the board, we've already received the check from AHN. This contract has been reviewed by our solicitor, and now we're waiting on AHN Solicitor as well.
Thank you very much. Great. Looking around, seeing no other questions, comments. Ms. Ms. Lint, you call the role, please.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action. And Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction action items. First is the memorandum of understanding. Approve the MOU for the Outreach Partnership of Technology OPT with the Seneca Valley Education Association, SVEA, is provided in the backup. Second is the memorandum of understanding cyber service. Approve the MOU for Seneca Valley Cyber Service with the Seneca Valley Education Association is provided in the backup. The School of McGuire Memorial Agreement. Approve the agreement with the School at McGuire Memorial to provide educational services during the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year is provided in the backup. Fourth item is Hope Learning Center Agreement. Approve the Hope Learning Center Agreement to provide school-based access services through twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year is provided in the backup. Fifth is club status. Approve club status for the Seneca Valley Senior High American Sign Language ASL Club at no cost to the district and under the supervision of Ms. Laura Wise is provided in the backup. Next is conferences. Approve the conference requests is provided in the backup. The following, the last item is the grant dispersments, grant permission to apply for and disperse if approved the following age grants. First is iconic foundation grant in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars for expenses related to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two First Tech Challenge, including fees, supplies and equipment requested by Miss Mursing and Mr. Fortunato. And the second is the Department of Environmental Protection Environmental Education Grant in the amount of three thousand dollars. Funds will be used to implement a farm flex plant system at Ermencrest Middle School to enhance curriculum involving the food chain, photosynthesis, the water cycle, and the importance of sustainability for fifth-grade students requested by Miss Mursing and Mr. Eiler.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Widowson. Any questions or comments? Mr. Peterson?
If you please, Mr. President, under conferences, letter F, two things. One is I noticed that Mrs. White at Haynes Elementary is going to a conference. I don't have my notes here. They're upstairs. I left them. I was intrigued by that. It sounds like more of the trauma-informed teaching and school environment. Wonder why we have only one person going to that? And then my second question, it's more of a comment, actually. Ms. Lewis asked for attendance at a conference. And looking at the footnote underneath it, I believe it said that she was to be named an Athletic Director of the Year. Do we know anything more about that?
Dr. Vitanga, throw this one to you.
I start with the trauma-informed. When it comes to professional conferences, number one, we really do our due diligence in trying to save money as as much as possible. We'll send one or two, and they bring the information back. Sometimes a team is required to attend. This is not one. So I know that Ms. White will bring that information back. And we also believe, just as we do when we talk about student And we also believe, just as we do when we talk about student agency and learning. That goes for adults as well, so, you know, we allow them within reason to choose their own professional learning. And that gives the adults the agency in them wanting to be there and bring that information back, so we have a lot of different ways that people get professional development. And in this case, uh, with the pandemic, most of those have gone virtual, which is, you know, some are doing a little more in person. They tend to be a little cheaper virtually. Um, the footnote on Ms. Lewis, I need to bring that up, I don't know if that's public knowledge yet, um, so I don't know if Dr. McKinley. I don't know if we're able to comment yet.
Sorry if I caught you short.
Certainly will, and if we can, uh, Ms. and Jacy's office will certainly comment on that. And then in addition, if I may, Mr. DiTullio, because Ms. Harrison is making this motion for the cyber service and the opt program. I do want to add, because the public, um, sometimes is not aware of, when we talk about outside cyber charters. Those are schools that parents, um, may choose to send their children to, that is not the Seneca Valley. Uh, cyber service, and we pay that school tuition, so that's called external cyber charters. What we have here is the opt program where we partner up with other public schools. And some private schools to offer their own cyber service that we don't pay tuition for. Now, what you hear about across the state is those external cyber charters that are really hurting public schools because the tuition is so high. And I do want to take a moment to, um, share with the board. That pre-pandemic, we had one hundred and twenty-six students enrolled in outside cyber charters. When the pandemic hit, that went up a little bit. All of those children have come back, I think at one point we even reached a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-six children in those programs. All of those students are back except for eleven. At the external cyber charters. And while we'd like all of them back, I think that speaks loudly to what our cyber program offers. No other school in the state has seen numbers like ours. To be so low with seventy-three hundred students and have, you know, pre-pandemic. A hundred and twenty-six out, and then now where we're sitting, even though we're still technically in the pandemic, we have a hundred and fifteen out. That's because of the work that our teachers do in the cyber program, so I want to point that out since that, since that motion is on the table. That, um, A and B is just a reminder that we're making agreements with our teachers' unions because. We sell seats to other school districts and our teachers are often the teacher of record. And they do that after their school schedule here. Or they go into other schools and they do train the train, trainer model. They teach other schools how to start their own cyber program to compete with those external cyber charters. That are charging the homeschool district tuition, so I just wanted to make all of that clear, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, and I'll add that we've been doing this for a number of years, um, and, and being very successful, and, you know. Also doing this allows us to support some of the other districts in the Commonwealth that maybe don't have the resources that we do to start their own. And we're able to give them the quality education. That a Seneca Valley student gets to maybe a remote community that wouldn't be able to offer certain things and certain high-level classes like we do, so. Um, you know, we started this, geez, I don't even know how long ago Dr. Vitale or Dr. McKinley. Um, but it's been something, it's been very successful, uh, since day one, it did take commitment and, you know, work on, on your part. Our teachers are definitely on board with the program, so it's been a success, um, that I think should be modeled throughout the state, but, you know, I'm just one guy. Um, anyway, are there any other questions or comments? Looking around, seeing none, uh, Ms. Mizlin, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson? Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, we'll move to business and finance, Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, I will make a motion for the approval of the following. Change orders, approve the construction change orders for Ermencrest has included in the backup. Budget resolution, approve the budget reg- resolution indicate, indicating that the district will not raise the rate of any tax. For the support of its public schools for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school fiscal year by more than three point four percent. Which is the Act One Index for the District as established by the Department of Education. The third item relates to budget transfers and the approval of the budget transfers included in the backup. And the last item relates to equipment dis- disposal, approve the sale of obsolete. Pool timing equipment to a district that has a compatible system or disposal of such equipment.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs, is there a second? Look, Mr. Nickel? Uh, any questions or comments on any of these items? Looking around, I don't see any, so, uh, Ms. Mizlin, if you color roll, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel? Ms. Bradel? Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, I will take this next item for personnel, and I'm going to ask for a motion that we approve the following. To approve the resignations, appointments, leaves, tenures, sabbatical, retirements. Memorandering of understandings as provided in our backup and discussed in executive session, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nickel, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Harrison, uh, we discussed this in executive, so we will move right to the vote, uh, Ms. Mizlin, if you color roll, please.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Stein.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight in the affirmative and one abstained.
Thank you very much, uh, we are in receipt of, I believe it's fifteen pieces of communication. Uh, that we've received in the last week, I'm sure we've all read through, um, and I know that we've already responded to some of the folks that had asked for, uh, personal touch on it. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there's any other item to be brought for the board. Uh, Mr. Nickel?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just real quick, we don't have a legislative update, uh, in tonight's agenda, we typically think do that in the working meeting, but. There was one piece of legislation that, you know, we all received emails from Pennsylvania School Board Association. That you may have noticed, I at least wanted to, to mention it, um. Uh, in this part of the meeting, both to all of you as members of our board and. And really to the fifty or so folks who are still on our meeting, and that is, uh, and I don't, I promise, I apologize, I don't have the House bill number, but it's a House bill. But I believe it just came out of committee, I don't know that it's gone into the Senate yet, but it's with regards to eliminating. The ability for, in this case, school board members to cross-file as they run for seats in elections. And I believe there's another, uh, piece of legislation out there that either is being introduced or already has. That would do the same thing for, you know, magisterial judges and things of that nature, and, you know, so it's out there. It's not the first time it's been introduced into the, uh, in Pennsylvania, you know, state legislature. Um, but it is out there, and I apologize if, you know, this comment also comes with a bit of an opinion, I. I would tell you that very briefly, when I ran for this position in two thousand and eleven, you know, and we are, of course, in Seneca Valley. Broken up into different geographies, and so I had the opportunity to. Knock on hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of doors as I campaigned for this position in two thousand and eleven, and. I think I recall, um, and I could be wrong, it's been a decade plus, um, only being asked once. Maybe twice what my party affiliation was. And, you know, again, I've been on this board for a decade, and I can't tell you honestly, uh, and I'm not asking how. Uh, what the party affiliation is for any of my colleagues on our board, and I think that. The fact that we, we've kept this, I think the right word is apolitical, uh, we've kept this, you know. Nonpartisan has been what has led to a lot of the success we've had at Seneca Valley. I mean, you know, again, I'm one person as a, as a member of nine on this board, there's so much partisanship in our world today. That I hope, uh, that we get some call from different organizations to speak to this, that. I'd really love to see us keep from school board elections. Any sense of partisanship, and, you know, I won't mention the representative's name, but. Um, the individual suggests that as they walk into a, a voting booth. And they don't know the individual, at least they can see what party they're, you know, uh, uh, being elected to and what. Where their heart and soul comes from, and I get, and I, I would just ask that each of us, and I think we, we do this as a, as a group of nine, and I won't speak for all of you. But learn the candidate, learn the individual, and to the extent we can keep party politics or partisanship. Out of the public education of our children, I just, I hope that remains the case, uh, I saw that. Email a day or two or three back, I mentioned to Mr. DiTullio, I wanted to at least mention it in our, in this section of the meeting. Because my hope is that that does not make its way into any sort of a voting. Session and that we remain able to keep these kinds of elections. You know, nonpartisan and really just about the kids and not about. Party affiliation, um, and the partisanship that we have in our country, so. Uh, Mr. DiTullio, thanks for the opportunity just to take a minute to mention that it is out there legislatively, I don't know where it's headed, uh, maybe we can talk about that again in February. But my hope is that that doesn't move forward and that we can continue to keep. You know, these kinds of groups of individuals just solely focused. On the kids and the education and the process to get them ready for the next stages of their lives, so. Thank you, Mr. DiTullio, I'd appreciate the couple of minutes on my soapbox.
No problem, and, and for, uh, everyone's information, that is House Bill twenty ninety-three. So, um, for your information, in case you're interested in reading up on it more. Are there any other items to be brought before the board? Looking around, not seeing any, then I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nickel and Mr. Widowson, I saw your hand go up as well, so I'm gonna take you as a second, is that all right? Thank you, all right, so all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, nay. And we are adjourned, good night, everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.